Good evening, welcome to Peoria City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, October 7th. Would you please rise, join us in a moment of silence, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Leonie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, with clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor Barrett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ames?
Here.
Councilmember Rivera?
Here.
Councilmember Patana?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Toma?
Here.
Councilmember Leonie?
Here.
Councilwoman Hilt?
Thank you. This is, at this point, this is the final call to Smith Speaker's request forms. Reforms can be found in the lobby. Fill them out, give them to the clerk, and we will call upon you at the appropriate time. Next item up is a presentation, certificates of appointment to boards and commission members. Would Mr. Patana, who's the Chair of the Boards and, of the Boards and Commissions?
Yes, I am.
Join.
Join.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Peoria has approximately 22 or 23 boards and commissions, and what people do is they give their time and they give their expertise to the city. They save us literally thousands of dollars, and essentially what they're doing is they're giving back to the city. So, we're always very proud and very happy to accept new members to our boards and commissions. Tonight, to the Arts Commission, we're giving an award to Joshua Schaefer.
for the Troops campaign.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to again speak to you about the Peoria Sunset Lions Foundation Annual Project, Christmas for the Troops.
Introduce yourself, please, for the record.
For the record, I'm Rachelle Barrett. I live at 14523 North 90th Lane here in Peoria, and I am chairperson, co-chairperson, along with Debbie Vine, for Christmas for the Troops.
Thank you.
I would never have believed when I first came before you that there would have been an opportunity to speak to you for the fifth annual Christmas for the Troops. In fact, I almost recall promising a couple of times, when it looked like it would be the last year, that we wouldn't need to do this project again. But instead, the very same people who were being brought back at that time have now been sent and redeployed to even more dangerous situations as the Middle East continues to escalate, feed on itself and on world democracy. We're just starting this project for the year, and already I have heard from people, "Oh, that again." That kind of frightens me, like our deployed military are no longer the hot cause or the sexy project to get behind. But our Lions Club is determined to make sure our service people have the very basics of personal hygiene and clean socks without having to spend their minimal pay away from home for soap, toothpaste, or magazines. It still just boggles my mind that our deployed troops are buying their own soap and toothpaste from their paychecks. Anything we can do to eliminate some of that stress, we are bound, as Americans, to take care of. I'd like to read you a correspondence from one of our chosen units for this year. He says, "My unit is from Yuma, Arizona. Our job is to maintain an AV-8B Harrier." You know, the Jet Arnold flies in that movie, True Lies? And you can probably guess, that means I'm on a boat. It's pretty confined, and there's very little variety at our ship's store. They run out of items really fast. Everyone is trying to get in better shape or stay in better shape, and their store always runs out of protein bars and tuna. We would really like to have some of that. We have a couple of Marines who have signed up for it, adopt a Marine personally, and when a package comes in, it really boosts morale. They share, but it doesn't go far. Thank you for anything you can help us with, and thank you. God bless America. Another one also from Yuma Marines, which, interesting enough, most of our Marines out of Yuma are deployed on ships and are off-coast in support units as opposed to being ground troops at this time. As in previous years, they've actually been deployed on ground. He says, he's also onboard a ship, but unable to give any details as to its location or the ship's mission. We have multiple Marines that try to keep their physical fitness up in very cramped conditions, so high-protein foods help. And then he goes on to list things like Cliff Bars and Protein Meal Bars and Granola Bars, but you can kind of tell the age of this young man because the 19-year-old kid kind of kicks in, and he asks for gummy bears and Skittles, Rice Kispy Treats, and any kind of snacks from home to help raise morale. For a bunch of kids who have to figure out how to make a new family from the strangers they are now mashed together with. We sometimes run out of toilet paper, and puzzle books or any sort of novel are a welcome sight. Other things to keep us occupied would be welcome when we're not too busy or to help us unwind when we've been too busy for too long a time. On a little lighter note, after five years of doing this, I have picked up one new word in my vocabulary. It's called pogey bait. If you've been in the military, you might know what pogey bait is. I didn't know. I had to go looking up that word, and I actually found it on a veteran's blog. And it was a female veteran that said, "Right before deployment or going on a field training exercise, we would stock up on PB, pogey bait. Beef jerky, crackers, Easy Cheese, ramen noodles, Kool-Aid, Fruit Loops, Cheez-Its, Funyuns, Skittles." She says, "You know, all the very nutritious foods on the very tip of the food pyramid." And that's what they carried with them to snack on and keep their energies up when they were carrying those heavy packs." So, now you've got a new word, pogey bait. Still don't know what a pogey is, though. I'd also like to tell you about a second project that the club is doing partnering with Theater Works this time to assist the veterans that have come home from Arizona. After five years of working with the needs of the active military, we've found an opportunity to assist the wounded, the ill, and the elderly veterans. During the run of Theater Works's show, the Christmas show they're doing, it's called The Quilt Maker's Gift, and that runs from August 6th through the 21st. The Peoria Sunset Lions and Theater Works will collect lap-sized quilts and afigands that will be donated to the patients, not to the hospital, to the patients at the Veterans' Hospital and at the Veterans' Home in Prescott, Arizona. Theater Works will be the drop-off point for that project. Since the Christmas for the Troops project will end on the 21st of November, before Thanksgiving, because we need to ship by the 26th this year, these two projects won't overlap. And with that, I simply want to say thank you for your assistance in the past. City and staff have been absolutely excellent, tremendous support for us, and I also ask for the city of Peoria to again partner with the Peoria Sunset Lions Club Foundation by providing the collection points for citizens to drop off their donations to help us with Christmas for the Troops, as you've generously done in the past. And with that, I'll be glad to ask and answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I go to the consent agenda, I, we have a request to move items 21C through 26C, the Alora Vita Final Plats, to the October 21st meeting. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toma, settled by Mr. Ames. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. There's one objection from Mr. Rivera. Otherwise, the vote is yes. Okay. We made a mistake. Could we re-vote on that? We have a motion and a second? Please vote. Try it one more time. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Also, there's going to be a slight change in the agenda. Item 32R and 33R are going to be moved to the last items on the regular agenda. With that, consent agenda. Consent agenda are all items that are listed with a C. They're considered to be routine or have been previously reviewed by the council. They'll be enacted in one motion unless a council member asks an item to be removed. Do we have any requests? Hearing none, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ames. Second it? Can you second? John? Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. Hearing unanimous. Thank you very much. Move this onto new business. First item is 31R, public hearing, liquor license Spankey's Smoke Shop located at 8868 West Bell Road, number 103. This will be a new wine and beer license, liquor license, Series 10. Could I have staff report?
Yes, Brent Mattingly, our Chief Financial Officer, will make a brief staff report, and also members of the Police Department, including Chief Mentor, will respond to questions.
Thank you, Carl. Pursuant to Arizona law, cities make recommendations to the State Liquor Board in relation to the state's consideration of issuance of liquor licenses. The standard for council's recommendation is whether the best interest of the community will be served by the issuance of these licenses. The city is in receipt of an application for a new wine and beer license for Spankey's Smoke Shop located at 8868 West Bell Road. The license application is part of your council packet this evening. The location previously had a wine and beer license under a different owner. The shop was sold, and the new owner is applying for a Series 10 license in his name. As required, properties were posted in accordance with Arizona statutes. The required fees have been paid by the applicant, and no comments were received from the public. However, based on concerns discovered by the Peoria Police Department during their investigation of the application, staff is recommending that the mayor and council recommend denial to the Arizona State Liquor Board for this Series 10 wine and beer liquor license. Our police chief, Roy Mentor, can speak to that investigation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, the Police Department is responsible for conducting background investigations for liquor license applicants. As a result of this investigation, we identified a few concerns regarding the applicant and their financial information. Lieutenant Doug Steele has reviewed this investigation and will provide you with a summary of our background investigation for this item.
Mayor and Council, in summation of the investigation, there's some information I'd like to share. First of all, the applicant is a gentleman by the name Jamal Sarkis under the LLC of several LLCs that are currently owned to him, Golden Cube Billiards, Phoenix Tobacco Group, and several LLCs that he has previously had contact with, in addition to an individual by the name of Anthony Sarkis, who is a member of the LLC that currently owns that facility. Jamal Sarkis, or father of Anthony Sarkis, has no outstanding liens, judgments, or any involvement in reference to recent or past criminal history that we can find. Our large concern actually is in the area of Anthony Sarkis, who actually shows on the bill of sale currently that him and his father are the current purchasers of that property, yet it's not on the LLC application. There's some inconsistency on ownership in reference to the property. Anthony Sarkis has, or is currently present, members of the following LLCs: Tight Line Guiding Service Group, Innovative Edge Manufacturing, MACH Trading Group, and the Phoenix Tobacco Group. Anthony currently has a notice of federal tax lien dated May of this year, an amount of $157,000. In addition, has a trustee deed upon sale in February 2008 on his property for $352,000. A notice of racketeering lien filed by the Maricopa County Attorney's Office on November 1st of 2013, listing Anthony Sarkis, Anthony Sarkis Revocational Trust, and a residence at City 928 Alavita in the city of Peoria. In addition to that, there's also a state lien, an amount of over $20,000. Anthony Sarkis has been a suspect of an investigation by the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office and DEA. In addition, Mr. Jamal Sarkis, who is their current listed purchaser of it, provided $25,000 for a payment to that, was unable to provide any monetary support aboard that money or those funds came from. So there's questions on to where those monies come from. Jamal Sarkis provided the investigator that he had no contact, or excuse me, no business relationship with the previous owners, yet in 2011, we show his name on incorporation paperwork with the previous owners, including his son. Mr. Sarkis's phone, Anthony Sarkis, had his residence foreclosed in 2009, and again, there's questions in reference to the financial and the financials that were provided, inconsistent statements as far as whose ownership. Jamal Sarkis, who is the listed purchaser of the property, admits that Anthony Sarkis will be responsible for all hiring and firing, providing all inventory checks or payments to them, and pretty much runs the store completely, yet on the paperwork in reference to the purchase agreement, showing that he's not in fact owner. So there's inconsistencies on ownership, inconsistencies on funding, and some questionable history in reference to Anthony Sarkis. And of course, I'll take any further questions that you might have.
Questions from council? Seeing none, at this time, I will open it up, public hearing. This is a public hearing for liquor license Spankey's Smoke Shop at 8868 West Bell Road. Would anyone in the audience care to address this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council action, discussion, and possible actions to recommend? Denial is the recommendation. Questions? Could I have a motion? The recommendation is to recommend denial to the State Liquor Board for the new wine and beer liquor license, Series 10, at 8868 West Bell Road. Questions? Mr. Ames?
Does that mean that Mr. Kemp will have to represent us at the hearing?
Mayor, Council, yes, it does, and we will appear on the city's behalf before the Liquor Board requesting that they uphold the city's recommendation for denial. And just because I think it's important for the record, I take it the council's recommendation for denial is based on the council finding that the best interest of the community is not served by the issuance of the license, nor is the public convenience served by the issuance of this license. And I'd ask that the clerk add that to the record.
And right now, there is no license with the shop, or?
Councilman, there's currently, there is a license for that shop under the previous owner, so it's a transfer, or new license.
It'd be transferred, it'd be bought from that person.
Yes, sir.
It would be a new license for the new owner. There is, as Commander Steele said, an existing license for the past owner.
Oh, okay. Other questions?
So a no vote is a denial?
Mayor, Council, the motion.
A yes vote is?
Yes vote recommends denial.
If you vote yes, you're telling the staff to, it's a denial.
A yes is a denial.
A yes is a? Mayor, Council, a yes is a denial. The motion before you recommends denial. So vote yes if you wish to deny, if you wish to, a different motion, vote no, and then obviously, this recommendation is based on the information contained in the investigation provided to you by the Police Department.
Is everybody clear on that? Okay, please vote. Clerk will record your vote. Unanimous in asking for denial. 32R, public hearing, Park West Area Plan Development Amendment, 99th Avenue and Northern.
Chris Hockes, our Planning and Community Development Director, will make a presentation on this.
Actually, Mayor, I believe we moved 32 and 33R to the end of the agenda, so we should have 34.
Yes, 32 and 33 go together. And for the public, 33 is a, 32 is the public hearing on Park West Area Plan Development Amendment, 99th and Northern Avenue, and 33, which is the companion piece, is the second amended, amended and restated Park West Development Agreement.
Yes, and Mayor Barrett?
We will hear the presentation for both items, we will vote them separately.
Yes, but I believe, Mayor Barrett, that these two items were moved to the end of the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we'd be jumping to item 34?
Yep, go to 34R. Minor general plan amendment, land use map, BCC automobile storage, 87th Avenue and Bell.
And Mr. Hockes will make this presentation as well.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to present items 34R and 35R together, as they are related.
And for the record, 35R is rezoning BCC automobile storage, 87th Avenue and Bell Road.
Thank you. The applicant in this case is Wiffy Morris, on behalf of BCC Development Incorporated, or otherwise known as the Van Tool Group. The site in question is indicated in red. It is north of Bell Road, between 87th and 88th Avenue. It's a little shy of five acres. There are two requests this evening. The first request, 34R, is a minor general plan amendment. The request is to redesignate the site from medium-to-high-density residential to neighborhood commercial. And then the rezone request, 35R, is a request to rezone the site from RM1 or multifamily residential to a planetary development for the purposes of an off-site vehicle parking and storage lot. Okay, so contextually, the site is currently undeveloped, although it's currently utilized as an auto storage lot through a temporary use permit. Directly to the north of the site is the Sierra Winds Retirement Community, and so moving clockwise to the east, the Montecito Assisted Living Facility, across 87th. To the southeast is Liberty GMC Auto Dealership. Directly south of the site is a mini-storage U-Haul on Circle K, and then to the west of the site is the Camden Fountain Palms Apartment Project. The site is bounded to the east by 87th Avenue. 87th Avenue is a collector roadway. It's a public right-of-way. The roadway on the other side, on the west side, is 88th Avenue. That's actually a private roadway. Now, this is a site that is, has close proximity to the Bell Road Auto and Commercial Corridor. This is a corridor that contains a broad range of commercial uses, although principally, as we all know, it is our Bell Road Auto Mall. The area delineated in red are current auto-related uses along the corridor, and in that regard, the band contains a number of auto-related uses, including vehicle sales, storage, auto-repair facilities, gas stations, car wash, and detailing facilities, and so forth. The subject site is also within that band, but we generally consider it to be a point of transition. And with that, the proposed auto storage is intended as a transitional site or buffer between existing multifamily residential uses directly to the north and single-family beyond that, and the more intense commercial uses along the Bell Road Corridor. This graphic illustrates the general plan land use on your left and the zoning on your right. To show you the proposed land use in context with the larger vicinity, you can see that along Bell Road, in red, the existing land use is regional commercial, which reflects the regional drawl of the area and higher intense land use category consistent with the auto dealerships and the related uses that we find today along Bell Road. The site, which is currently designated as medium-high-density residential in the land use plan, is also designated within the North Peoria Redevelopment Area Plan, and this is a plan, basically a specific area plan that was adopted in 1993 that provides additional refinement to the general plan in the area, but it does designate the site as community commercial. The applicant is proposing to redesignate the site to neighborhood commercial, which provides for a land use transition between the regional commercial and the medium-high-density residential commercials uses to the north. The proposed zoning, again, is for a PAD, a planetary development, and essentially what that is, is that's a zoning tool whereby we can tailor the standards and uses to promote compatibility within the area as opposed to a standard zoning district, where you have standard areas, uses and standards, rather. This graphic illustrates the conceptual development plan. The applicant is seeking to permanently utilize the site as a vehicle parking and storage lot, and in that regard, make permanent enhancements to improve aesthetics and provide screening and buffering. The use would support the applicant's dealerships in the area and operate within its normal business hours. So the way the site would work is that cars would be driven from the dealerships to the storage lot when called. So on the, when they're in the storage lot, they would be detailed and prepared, and when needed at the dealership, somebody would come, get the car, and drive it back to the dealership. There would be no transport trucks utilized in this operation. Now, the PAD is tailored to restrict uses of the site to vehicle storage and staging with some ancillary uses. Some of those ancillary uses include detailing, installation of accessories, basically product or car upgrades, also car wash facility. Any detailing and installation would have to occur indoors within a, within a building, and on the site, a potential future building is noted on the far right of the site plan. Now, as part of the development, they would be required to store vehicles on a paved surface with onsite retention, which is not the condition today. They would be required to install a 20-foot landscape buffer both along 87th Avenue and also 88th Avenue. There would also be a requirement for a 21-foot landscape buffer that would separate this site from the Sierra Winds site to the north. Included within that is an eight-foot decorative wall both on the 87th Avenue street frontage and the 88th Avenue street frontage. For security, the applicants would be required, would be providing a steel gate to secure the site, and they've talked about additional security measures which they may implement, which could include an onsite security guard or cameras, or both. As you know, with our citizen review process, we do provide a notice of application when the, when the case comes in. We also provide a notice of hearing. This was routed to all property owners within a 600-foot radius and all registered HOAs within one mile. Through the process, we did receive two phone calls and one letter expressing opposition. This opposition did come from the same party, from the Sierra Winds representative to the north. A neighborhood meeting was held on May 6th, 2014, at Desert Harbor Elementary School. There were six neighboring property owners and citizens that attended the meeting. Some of the concerns that were brought up at the meeting included use restrictions, the proposed use restricting the site to, to auto storage versus the current entitlement. As you recall, the current entitlement zoning is for multifamily residential, so there were some that preferred the multifamily zoning. There were also concerns about traffic and truck access, would the, would the cars be transported to the property via 87th or 88th? There were particular concerns along 88th Avenue, which is the private drive and provides primary access to Sierra Winds. There were concerns about what kinds of security provisions are going to be in place, what about lighting, is there going to be light spillage onto neighboring properties, and also the general aesthetics of the property. Today, the site is not in a great condition. It's under, again, under a temporary use permit, but there are no permanent improvements in place. This application would change that. The item was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission at the August 21st public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval, but we did have three, or rather, four speakers present. We did have three members that spoke in opposition. They were all from the Sierra Winds community. One was their legal counsel, one was their marketing director, and then a resident of the community. So some of the concerns that they expressed at the planning commission was the belief that this would increase traffic in the area, the perceived undesirable appearance of the lot that's today, and also their perception that the storage lot would, would have a negative effect on the ability to market units to Sierra Winds. We did have one resident that spoke in support of the project from Sierra Winds and read letters from two other residents in support. Those residents were not at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So as a result, after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant and staff, along with Councilmember Patana, did also meet with Representative Sierra Winds, the marketing director, and so we talked about some of the concerns, and there were additional stipulations that have been added to the, to the staff report and to the ordinance. They are stipulations 12 through 14. What they do is they, they address some of the concerns that we heard, namely, one, site lighting. This does limit site lighting to 15 feet, and this is, and this is significant because commercial site lighting is typically allowed to go up to 25 feet, so this would bring it quite a bit down. In fact, it brings it a little below the residential standard of 16 feet. Again, there are also concerns of hours of operation, particularly for the, you know, future. Again, there are also concerns of hours of operation, particularly for the future ancillary detailing uses in the building. So we've limited the hours of operation to occur between seven AM and seven PM, rather than just the generic normal business hours. We've also addressed the delivery and transport of vehicles, so as you recall, there were concerns about Eighty-eighth Avenue. We've limited that to only Eighty-seventh Avenue, so there could be no transport, no delivery cars via Eighty-eighth Avenue. That would be a restricted access to the site for that purpose. And the applicant, there was also, let me back up, there was also concerns about the necessity for more landscaping in the storage area. So the applicant did propose additional landscaping in this area, although tonight we did get a letter from Sierra Winds just prior to the council meeting. I had a quick chance to scan it. That letter's been passed out to the council. I did have a chance to briefly speak with the applicant about this, to the extent, in that letter, the Sierra Winds, rather, was asking for even more landscaping, so to that extent, the applicant is agreeable to providing more landscaping. They basically have a landscape plan that doubles the amount of landscaping that they did show Sierra Winds, so they are agreeable to that provision. Finally, in terms of key staff findings, and with regard to the general plan amendment, again, as I mentioned, this conforms to the underlying North Peoria Redevelopment Plan. It does support the economic health, the Bell Road auto corridor, which is a key goal within the general plan, and we believe it also provides for the development of a site that's a transitional infill site. We believe we've scaled down the standards and the uses to a reasonable scale and intensity. With regard to the zoning, we believe, again, with the standards in place, tailored, low-intensity list of allowable uses, and overall, we believe it just provides an adequate transition between the Bell Road corridor and the multifamily to the north. So with those key findings and that presentation, we are recommending to the council thirty-four R to re-designate four-point-five-seven acres from medium-high-density residential to neighborhood commercial, and thirty-five R, rezon four-point-five-seven acres from multifamily to a planetary development. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Ames.
Yes, I'm wondering about safety. I know the dealers park their cars out there around their building. Is it going to have the same kind of security theft of those autos back in this back area?
Mayor, Councilor Ames, this site would include, not only the site would be fenced off, but it would also include security gates as well, so the cars would be behind those gates. And as I mentioned, the applicant is talking about future security measures, which the onsite guard or cameras or both, they would be behind gates.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. I met on a couple occasions with both the developer, their attorney, and with the staff from Sierra Winds, along with Chris, and it's my belief that the developer has either met or exceeded all of the recommendations by Sierra Winds. They're lowering their lighting, they're closing Eighty-seventh Avenue, they're locking that gate. They've agreed to putting in larger trees along the northern side by Sierra Winds, and they've also agreed to putting in some islands and trees. And now, again, this evening, you said they've even agreed to more. So again, I think they've met every stipulation that Sierra Winds have asked. I'm going to vote in favor of this, and I recommend approval. Thank you.
Mr. Ames?
Yeah, is this going to be used by a multitude of the dealers there? Is that the idea?
Mayor, Councilor Ames, this application was filed on behalf of the Van Tool Group, so I believe they work with several dealerships in the area.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's an improvement for the area.
Are there questions or comments? Okay, the first is thirty-four R, minor general plan amendment, land use map, oh, excuse me, I do have one request, no, what's the next one? Land use map, BCC automobile storage, Eighty-seventh Avenue and Bell Road. Could I have a motion?
Second.
Move by Mr. Patana, second by Mr. Ames. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. The second half of this is thirty-five R, rezoning BCC automobile storage, Eighty-seventh Avenue and Bell Road. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Move by Mr. Ames, second by Mr. Edwards. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is thirty-six R, adoption of the twenty-fourteen Community Services Master Plan.
John Seftall will make a brief presentation on this item, and council will recall this was before you in, I believe, your last meeting, maybe two meetings ago.
August twenty-seventh.
Or three.
Thank you, Carl, and good evening, Mayor and council. We do have a quick presentation and a little discussion on our passing of resolution twenty-fourteen dash one-four-eight, adopting the Community Services Master Plan as follow-up to your August twenty-seventh approval of that master plan. And I do want to first recognize, again, our team that put a lot of effort into making sure that all the information and the public's voice was heard. Brenda Ranki, Recreation Manager, Chris Calcaterra, Sports Facilities Manager, Mary Roberts, Library Manager, Kurt Keynes, Park Manager, all played an integral part in ensuring that our consultant team of Norris Design helped to guide and to capture the community's voice in this master plan. Additionally, I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Board. In the audience tonight is Bill Collette. Their whole team really led the public outreach process for the whole Community Services Master Plan as well. The Planning and Zoning Commission, and Chris Hockus and the Planning and Community Development Team, all were very instrumental in helping us reach some pretty major milestones throughout the process. Here's a quick look of the contents of the master plan that you have in your agenda books tonight. Some key areas that I'd like to highlight are, of course, the Community Stakeholder Engagement Summary, the Facility Inventory and Conditional Assessment, as well as the Recommendations and Prioritized Action Plans. This master plan is truly implementation strategies for parks, right-of-ways, recreation, trails, sports facilities, the whole gamut of what Community Services is responsible for. It supports the CAPRA accreditation process. We will be for the CAPRA board next Monday to evaluate our department's achievements for accreditation, and of course, it aligns specifically with the Community Services Department Mission Plan. Probably one of the most important elements of the process was the community engagement. We spent a significant amount of time holding stakeholder meetings in various areas throughout the community. We had a number of visits here with Mayor and council, as well as the Planning Commission. I cannot honestly say that the voice of the community is represented throughout the document. We heard from over seven hundred users logged into the website, mypeoriaaz.gov. We had some peak usage. We had a very significant community survey, where we had over eight-hundred-and-eleven responses with a very significant level of confidence within that survey. Additionally, the plan is well-integrated into the council policy goals, as well as the general plan, with key focus on ensuring that we're tied directly to the Peoria-Sinoran Preservation Program, open space, as well as the Desert Lands Conservation Ordinance. A major amount of the work associated with the update is the inventory and the conditional assessment of our park assets, parks and recreation assets. GIS inventory was completed. Each of our parks has a database, a data collection of all of our assets, and it has allowed us to really establish some of the level of service analyses and to be able to create and recognize where we have needs, where we have gaps, and where we may be servicing the community appropriately, from a level of service with respect to trails, driving analysis, as well as walking distances to our neighborhood parks. It's the type of information that we have in the community master plan. Out of that, we had some specific areas of focus and strategic recommendations. The park and facility development and enhancement, we've got, obviously, a significant investment in the community. We want to ensure that we protect that investment and continue to invest in the right ways. Our programs and service deliveries, a good analysis has been done and additional information compiled so that our programmers can ensure that we're serving the community appropriately. As well, partnerships and collaborative efforts. Everybody recognizes that we can't do it alone anymore. Partnerships will be a key focus for the department and, obviously, relate directly to successes that we'll have in the future. As well, department organization, staffing, and resources. Significant amount of analysis has been done, and we've got some action plans to work on. Funding resources and opportunities, obviously something that we try to address every year through our annual budget, but also through our long-term planning with the CIP program, as well as future funding opportunities. It is provided to us in a database spreadsheet that we can access and work on with each of those top priorities in the different categories, as well as some of the strategy definitions. And some key action items have been identified, specific to the parks, facilities, and right-of-way priorities, marketing and promotion of our community programs, as well as the services that we provide, a focus on administration and business services so that, from a central unit, we can actually support the direct line, the frontline service divisions, like parks, recreation, the libraries, and the sports complexes. Definitions to help the planners, if you will, for parks and pathways. By identifying these areas, it will help the master plan, master planning community that comes in so that they know that they're expecting and meeting the expectations that the city will have. As well, again, recognizing the open space coordination. So again, tonight is your adoption of the resolution. I want to thank the Attorney's Office for ensuring that we have enough wherlasses within this resolution and their support. So as, again, mentioned, August twenty-seventh, we were given approval as the form, and tonight is the resolution, and you will see, again, the reference to the Community Services Master Plan and the future reference in the general plan amendment in this upcoming cycle of twenty-fifteen. And with that, I will happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Council? So you know, could I have any motion? By Mr. Patana, second by Mr. Edwards. This is thirty-six R, the adoption of the twenty-fourteen Community Services Master Plan. Please vote. Clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more, wait a minute. Mr. Rivero, do not vote. Next, we go back to thirty-two R and thirty-three R. Thirty-two R is Park West Plant Area Development Amendment, Ninety-Ninth Avenue and Northern Avenue, and along with that, we will hear thirty-three R, as well as second amendment, amended, restated Park West Development Agreement. However, we will vote upon these separately.
Chris Hockus will be making a presentation, and supported by Scott White, our Development Services Director.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Item thirty-two R, this is a request filed by the Howard Hughes Corporation to amend portions of the Park West PAD zoning that governs the center. As you know, Park West is located at the northeast corner of Ninety-Ninth Avenue and Northern. The center is what we call a outdoor mixed-use lifestyle center, which is basically a mix of uses organized into a Main Street format. The center is comprised of three development parcels. So if you look at the graphic, parcel one being the far left, parcel one is what we know as the retail parcel that's anchored by a Harkins Theater. Parcel two includes an existing two-hundred-and-fifty-four unit apartment complex, and parcel three, which is adjacent to Loop One-O-One, is vacant. Parcels one and parcel three are both owned by the Howard Hughes Corporation. Parcel two is under separate ownership. So in short, the applicant, they are seeking to amend the PAD zoning. The amendment is as follows. They are seeking to permit residential or mixed-use residential on parcel one, the retail portion. They are also seeking to permit higher education uses on parcel three, the vacant portion, and to integrate this new development option into the PAD. They are also looking to make some modest adjustments to the existing freeway sign provisions, and then various housekeeping modifications as well. So contextually, the site occupies a strategic gateway. It is delineated within the Loop One-O-One corridor and Ninety-Ninth Avenue arterial, the western boundary of the site. Northern, as you know, is designated as a limited access parkway. Further west, out in the far west valley, it's currently under construction to a freeway condition. The front door or the primary entry into Park West is via Northern. There are three secondary access points along Ninety-Ninth Avenue. The site also has a key vantage point in that it is proximate to the West Gate Center and the sports venues located to the south, also proximate to a potential future resort casino across Northern on the Tejano-Odom property. To the north of the center that abuts the power line corridor is North Ranch Estates and West Green Estates. These are existing single-family communities. A three-hundred-and-thirty-foot-wide power line corridor separates the Park West Center from the residential areas to the north. Although the power line corridor is part of the Park West site, it is utilized for retention, parking, and lighting. So this graphic illustrates the general plan land use map on the left and the zoning map on the right. The site is designated on the general plan as mixed use. This is a designation and location where the city has long determined a mix of uses to be desired, whereas standard zoning attempts to separate incompatible land uses. This type of designation promotes a form where housing, jobs, and entertainment in close proximity and closely integrated is desired. So not only does this form, this urban form, meet sustainability goals, such as limiting vehicle trips and impacts on air quality, but also promotes walkability. It also provides for interesting public spaces and a clear lifestyle choice, and rather a lifestyle choice that we don't see very prevalent in the valley. There are some examples out in the East Valley to the West Valley, I would say probably, you know, Park West, West Gate, maybe to a certain extent, the Verrado Corridor, but the Verrado Community, but certainly not a very prevalent choice in the West Valley In this slide, I'd like to illustrate just briefly some of the land use history. The site was provided with mixed-use designation on the two-thousand-one general plan. That was the first general plan that went to a public vote. The Park West PAD zoning that was established in two thousand and four, again, the site was always envisioned as a mixed-use center. It included a development structure that had a broad range of uses, everything from retail, office, and residential, and there was this intention to integrate the parcels so that they all kind of functioned as one mixed-use development. The PAD was modified in two thousand and five, and that modification added the SRP corridor to the development site. And in that regard, there was quite a public process. There was some citizen interest, particularly from residential areas to the north, and there were a number of conditions that were placed on that corridor, namely, it required access to Park West to occur two-hundred-and-seventy feet from the south. It required a hundred-foot landscape buffer and security lighting as well. So all those improvements have been integrated into the development today. The last major PAD amendment occurred in two thousand and seven, and that was centered on the parcel three, and in that amendment, the developer sought entitlement for a nine-story office building, ten-story hotel condo with structured parking, and there was a site plan that was even turned in at the time. And so the entitlement was approved by council, but that was about the time that the economy turned and the site plan never materialized. Nonetheless, that entitlement or that development option does exist for the property today. So this is a graphic that just illustrates the development option two thousand and seven that I illustrate, again, parcel three being the parcel adjacent to Loop One-O-One. So let's talk about what the amendment, what the applicant is proposing to today. So they are seeking to amend the PAD use schedule, so this is essentially what types of uses are allowed within the PAD. They are looking to add multifamily residential within a mixed-use building as a permitted use. Incidentally, multifamily is not currently permitted within parcel one, the retail portion. They are also looking to add post-secondary education college facility on parcel three. So they're seeking to retain the two thousand and seven development option that I just showed you a few minutes ago, but they want to add a new development option, and I'll talk about that in a minute briefly. And then we'll talk briefly about some of the modest adjustments to the freeway sign standards that they're seeking. So as part of the development, the PAD, they're seeking to integrate a new development option. This is the graphic that illustrates that option two, that new development option. So what this option provides for is this provides for the ability to have up to three-hundred-and-sixty-nine multifamily units on parcel one. The buildings are envisioned to be four stories. So let me show you where those buildings are. Let me see if this thing works. There we go. So the areas you see outlined in blue, those would be the buildings that the new multifamily uses would be integrated into. They would be contained within a four-story building. The buildings would have ground floor, commercial, or retail uses with multifamily above that. So in a minute, I'll show you a rendering to kind of give you a sense of what that might feel like. The parking accommodation would occur within each building pad. Parking appears adequate, but again, they would have to be proven up at the site plan stage. On parcel three, that's the other major portion of this amendment. Let's get this thing working here. One more, there we go. So the option envisions approximately one-hundred-and-forty-thousand-square-foot secondary education center. So generic term, but that could come in the form of a college or trade school or what's called an innovation center. So as part of the application, staff did review and accept an updated TIA, or Traffic Impact Analysis. So that analysis not only looked at the, you know, reaffirmed the two thousand and seven development option, but also looked at this development option. So some of the findings from that TIA include the fact that development option two, this development option, would actually generate one-hundred-and-ninety-eight less average daily trips than the previous option. Secondly- Secondly, the TIA finds that the change in land use that's identified up here on the screen does not dramatically change the level of service for intersections along northern at 99th, 98th and the Loop 101. In fact, under both development options, they would both continue to operate at an acceptable level of service at buildout and could be maintained without any southbound frontage road on Loop 101. All right, so let's go to the rendering now. There we go. So what you're looking at here, and I don't really have a cursor to point to, but this is the the vantage point is from 99th Avenue, so you're looking eastbound. So, oh, I'll probably mess this up. That's all right, we'll just talk through it. So if you look, if you look in the center of the screen here, I forget, the center of the screen, that's where the Harkins Theater is, so you can kind of see that in the center. If you look in the distance, you can see the proposed innovation center kind of bookending the site to the left and to the right. Those are the proposed multifamily mixed-use buildings. Again, if you look at the graphic, it's intended that that commercial and retail uses would operate at the bottom floor, and then floors two, three and four would be the multifamily residential area. So this gives you a sense of the form of the massing and the rhythm along the street. So whereas today, we have a we have a limited mix of uses across two parcels, I believe what this does is advances the notion of a true mixed-use development at at Park West. So the other element of the amendment pertains to freeway signage. Today, there is already existing allowances for freeway signs. There are no signs installed today. The applicant has discussed their interest in proving visibility of the center and reinforcing its brand. They've also cited concerns with the current visibility of the center, given the configuration of the property, the walls and the trees. So in this amendment, they are asking for modest adjustments to the existing freeway sign standards. So just to be clear, we're not talking about billboards, electronic message boards, we're just talking about your your standard typical freeway signs. And also in that regard, just to note, we do have existing provisions within the zoning code. It's called comprehensive sign plan that does allow certain qualifying sites, and this would be a qualifying site, to have a increase in sign height and sign area. So what they are asking to do is go from 240 square feet per signed face to 300 and a maximum height of 48 to 60. Again, this is consistent with the comprehensive sign provisions in the zoning ordinance. With regard to citizen participation, applications were sent out. There was a neighbor meeting held on November 13 at the Ramada End on Grand Avenue. There were 20 attendees, which included staff and also the councilperson for the district. Some of the citizen concerns that were cited at that meeting included impacts from additional multifamily residential. There was a thought that that might have a negative impact on property values, that there might be a negative effect on noise and additional traffic in the area. There was also a perceived speeding problem in the in the neighborhood to the north, particularly near the elementary school. And some of the attendees there did express a desire for a sound wall, although we'll note others expressed a desire not to have a sound wall because they thought it would impede their their views. So to that end, as you know, the center already contains an existing 254 multifamily units. Staff today is unaware of any negative impacts or issues surrounding that land use. Moreover, not only does the proposal advance the mixed-use vision for the center, we have also received a letter of support from the Peoria Unified School District. So since that meeting, staff has not received any other calls, letters or emails in opposition. Thereafter, let me go back, I'm sorry. Thereafter, the the applicant did go around, they sent letters to all properties within 1,000 feet. They did go to door-to-door to talk to individuals, and they have provided staff with a petition containing 139 parties in support of the project, and that those parties included 118 residences and 21 businesses. All 118 residences are from the immediate community to the north. This application was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 21st. There were three speakers. There were two speakers in in support. However, one of those speakers did express concerns with the height of the multifamily building. They were concerned that they might be too high and negatively impact the neighborhood. And there was also an expressed a need for a sidewalk on 99th Avenue all the way up to Olive, up to, excuse me, to Olive Avenue. There was also one speaker in opposition. That speaker cited concerns with additional traffic and the building height of the multifamily mixed-use buildings. I will note that in regard to the sidewalk, while it's outside the responsibility of this project, we do have a, we do have a 99th Avenue reconstruction project in the city CIP. It's slated for design in fiscal year 2016 and construction in '17. Our engineering department, they're going to be looking at the sidewalks as a potential part of that scope. So that issue will be looked at as part of that future CIP project. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they were in support of this amendment. However, in deference to the concern of the building height, they did add a stipulation, and that stipulation is part of the ordinance, that limits the height of the mixed-use multifamily building to four stories. So essentially, that building would be no higher than than the existing Harkins Building because that's essentially about a four-story building in height. They offer unanimous recommendation of approval based on that hearing and and our findings, which include the following, that the proposal does conform to the Peoria General Plan, it does conform to the mixed-use land use designation. It advances, as I mentioned earlier, several sustainability efforts, promotes a development form that minimizes trips, promotes walkability, provides for a healthful mix of land uses, and another goal, it also promotes economic vitality of the center. And so what happens on a mixed-use site where we have, we have a, we have opportunities for employment, retail and residential uses, is it helps level out some of those peak timeframes. So whereas you might get a lot of dining activity at night, when you have daytime uses, it helps flatten those peak times and and promote the health and vitality of the center. So with that, and with conditions in your report of one to eight, staff is recommending approval, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we entertain questions, I've got, well, we have the public hearing, and I've got several speaker request forms. So I would like to listen to the public first, and then we'll do questions. Okay? Is that all right? Do you agree with that? Okay. Well, first of all, I have to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Park West Plant Area Development Amendment, 99th Avenue and Northern Avenue. Did any, was anyone in the audience would like to address this issue? If you've already filled out your paper, I'll get to you in just a moment. So any other members of the public care to address this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will move to the speaker request forums. The first one is Joel, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, Joel DeAngelis.
I am a resident of the North Ranch Estates. I have been at all of the meetings that were referenced by the Howard Hughes representative and have generally been an approval of what they have been attempting to communicate to us. That having been said, I am a little concerned that the group may be trying to, if you'll excuse the expression, push their luck. The amendment that they're asking for is is a little bit more than what they told us they were planning to do and would add to a little, some of the problems that we initially addressed and that they attempted to reconcile. Looking at that, looking at the map that you have up on the screen and addressing the area along 99th Avenue, they told us that those were from top to bottom, one, two, and that's where it stopped. I am getting the impression that perhaps they also want to now add housing to the area where the sandbar used to be and is now unoccupied. They basically were driven out of business by Toby Keith, which is the monster in that development and a good one, and we're glad to see it there. That having been said, I also note that they want to put mixed housing on the other side of the Harkins Theater, which they never told us they wanted to do, which basically increases the number of units substantially above the number that we were originally told was their goal. And I have a concern about that. My concern is furthered by the fact that at the last meeting, after we had addressed our concerns, we were met in the lobby after the meeting adjourned by some of the representatives who addressed some of the concerns we had and said that they would be getting back to me specifically, I can't address anybody else, with some materials that would allay some of my concerns. That meeting was in August. I never heard from them. So I have some concerns about the fact of whether they're just talking through their hat or whether they really are concerned about those of us who live in the community. I was one of the ones that addressed the business about the road, the sidewalk between where the complex is and Olive. If you know that road, it's a disaster. During the latest rains, that had to be closed for three days because it flooded out and there was a car, there was a car drowned in there. There was no sidewalk. There have been men killed in car accidents and in pedestrian accidents in there since the 10 years that I've lived here. We try to walk down there to get to some of the shops and also do some exercise. It's a hazard. You take your life in your hands riding on that, walking on that road. And if we're going to have 396 more units in that area using that street and adjacent to where we are, I have and the members of my community have, some more concerns that were not initially addressed in the initial proposals as we were told by the Howard Hughes people. And so I do have some concerns with respect to that. I'd like to address them as to whether they really do intend to put units in the area where the sandbar is or whether they're still going to just put the units in what they called parcels one and two in our, in our initial meetings. And if the business of bidding more homes on the other side of the Harkins Theater now increases the density, because again, I do not recall them mentioning that that was a part of the initial plan that I and other members of North Ranch had no problem with as long as they were just going to be doing it on 99th Avenue. And I, since they're here, I'd like them to address some of those questions before I would bring up any other points.
I'm sure that they will. Thank you.
Now, I also recognize-
Sir, sir, your time's up.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say that I recognize here to the call to the public that the council is not authorized by state law to discuss or take action on any issue raised by public comment until a later meeting. I don't know whether my comments, my comments justify having this proposal table until these issues can be addressed. I do not know where where I would stand on that. I leave it to council to inform me.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Phelan.
I'm on the next side.
Well, we're considering them both together, so we will vote sequentially. So you can speak now or I'll try, wait at me to remind me when we hit 33. Oh, boy. Wale Yazigi. Is that even close?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yes.
Hello, my name is Wale Yazigi. I own a business in Park West, and I've been there for five years now, and I just renewed for another five years. I'm very happy being there, and I just wanted to express my interest or either my, the tenants that there too, that I spoke with, interest in having those signs up. Now, after five years, I still get the answer from the, my customers when I ask them, how did you hear about us? They just, they're the first visit to Park West, so I feel having those signs will definitely help us bringing more customers to Park West and introduce us to people that drive by every day. So I just, I'm a big supporter of the signs going up.
Okay. Thank you. Next is the representative of the applicant, Heidi Short.
Mayor Barrett, members of the council, for the record, Heidi Short with Fenimore Craig, 2394 East Camelback Road in Phoenix. I will address some of the neighbors' concerns, if I might. This is the only site plan we've ever had or shown. We don't anticipate any changes to the site plan. And with a specific reference to the sandbar, we're actually happy to announce that a lease has been signed for a restaurant called The Cabin, which will have more of a northern feel to it. It's the owner of The Risky Rose, which apparently is a popular restaurant, and they are already in for permits with the city of Peoria, and they're processing and hope to be open by December. With respect to the sidewalks, I'm not 100% certain. I understand the the question or concern. There are, there is a sidewalk in place all along Park West, the project, all along 99th Avenue. And I drove by the project today on Northern. I think I saw a sidewalk there as well. But there is a sidewalk all along 99th. So the sphere of influence for the project, there is a sidewalk, and I believe the CIP will address the sidewalk north of the project. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the applicant? Question? Carla?
I want to speak.
Okay. I'll get to you in just a minute. Now, it's, I need a motion for 32R, Park West Plant Area Development Amendment, 98th Avenue and Northern. Could I have any motion? And then we'll speak. And then I'll, everybody speak. So moved. I need a second. Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Patena. Mr. Leoni.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is in my district, and it's been a long time coming because you have a lot of these open pads, and I was really concerned what was going to go in there. When I heard about these apartments going in, then I really had some concerns because at first I was told it was four stories high, five stories high. I'm going to put that picture back up there, please. Yeah, now I can, I really wanted two stories high, but they wouldn't go for it. So now we got what, three stories high plus the bottom? Now, this, this is going to be a great for Park West because on the bottom there, you get all these land uses. I'll let you read off a couple of them just so you'll know what's going in there, and I think it's great. Like you got a dry cleaning and laundry, locksmith, recording studio, radio and television sales service, ticket and travel agencies, watch and clock, repair shop, barber shop. You're also, excuse me, you're also got a professional administrator of business office. You got the dance studio, you got roller rink. Hopefully, you can put a miniature golf in there, and you got, maybe you can put an ice skating rink in there. And there's a, there's, excuse me, there's a lot of land used to go in there, hobby stamp and coin shop, a newsstand now, a newsstand. I used to work that when I was a kid back in Boston, but I don't think it's the same thing. It's going to be great to see all these come in. Video retail stores, water and ice store, daycare center, preschool center, hardware and home improvement store. So I think all these amendments is going to be great for the area. My, my other concerns are, like the gentleman has said, and the lady said, it's true, do have sidewalks on Northern and 99th, but once you pass 99th, that road has to be widened all the way down to Olive. And if you've never driven that road, you'll see a bump in there, and you'll see a cross where two kids got killed because of that road. Of course, they were speeding, but still, they were killed, and I think that road should be widened. And when it rains, they close that 99th Avenue, they close that up so you can't get through because it's all flooded. As far as the sidewalk, I believe we need, do need a sidewalk then if Andy wants to talk on it. He can. We do need a sidewalk there, but I understand Kevin Johnson owns it, and I'm, I think that he will donate that property to us to put a sidewalk there. The other thing I'm concerned about on Northern, you do have a light, a signal light. When you get to Olive, and I did that one time, I drove down 99th, and it was about almost a half a mile backed up with cars trying to get onto Olive. So I had to make a U-turn and went down 91st to get home. We need a signal light at Olive and 99th. Now, I know we got a signal light there for the fire department, but that don't go on unless they get a fire when they come out.
Mr. Leoni, this has nothing to do with the applicant. You're talking about CIP projects. Would you please restrict your your comments to the proposed development?
Well, I guess I said everything I had to say. I think it's a great idea. Excuse me. I think it's a great idea, and I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ames.
Yes. The-
Yes, the multifamily, we're looking at rentals basically here? Or condominiums?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Ames, I don't know if the applicant has indicated if they'll be rentals or, or ownership units.
As I know, the rental market, we've had trouble, for example, Thunderbird and the one-on-one freeway, the west side there, filling those, and I hope we're not going to have a lot of empty apartment buildings. I know the sports complex in Glendale around there has a lot of empty buildings.
Yeah, and I would, I would just add that this provides a, a very different environment than maybe some of the standard apartment complexes that we might see around the city. I think people actually seek out these types of environments where they can walk to, walk to businesses and entertainment and so forth.
And we're talking multifamily, but the bottom, when I look at the picture and what Carlo mentioned, there's apparently going to be a lot of shops on, on the first floor, right, in various of the buildings?
Correct. The first floor would be ground floor retail, and in regards to that, just to clarify, Mr. Leone is reading a number of uses that, that could potentially go in Parcel One, and it is, it is a broad diverse list of using. The uses are actually, will be dictated by market conditions and actual leases, so those are potential uses that could go there.
And I think that's a good mix, and I will encourage people to rent here, maybe then some other places that are just buildings away from everything. Another, another thing, the college, is that going to be large enough for any meaningful? I, I know Trine was talking about moving there and after a year or two more. You don't know what's been negotiated there, you just know it's been put aside for that, right?
Mayor, Councilor Ames, I just know that, that what's contemplated is about one-hundred-and-forty-thousand square feet. I don't know, Mr. White, if you want to address that.
Yes, this will actually be, be, discussed in more detail as part of the development agreement, but yes, one of the targeted industries that we think could be a good fit for the Parcel Three execution would be an institution of higher education. And so, in working with the applicant, we did develop the site plan that contemplated about a one-hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot building for, for an institution of higher education. But when we start talking about the development agreement, we'll talk about all the targeted industries that we think could be a good play for this parcel.
Okay. And you think it's large enough for a growing university, or?
We believe so, yeah, because that, that was, that was a site plan that was done in conjunction with an institution of higher education based on the type of program that they would bring to, to Peoria as a startup campus.
And I noticed there's some land that you didn't address yet, maybe belongs to the other owner, and two on the top up there? If you can go to that next map, or? Yeah, above the existing residential, up above there? And above future education on the, on the top toward the end of the development area?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Ames, I think what you're referring to is the SRP power line corridor. It's a three-hundred-and-thirty-foot corridor. So Parcel Three, as it develops, would continue the existing usage of that corridor, which today is parking, retention, and lighting.
Okay. So that's already being utilized, or?
Well, it is for the Parcels One and Two, but as Parcel Three develops, you know, they already have restrictions on that, and it's limited to those, those uses.
Okay. And my other thing, you had mentioned the sign going to be, could be sixty feet. What's going to be on that sign? Just the various businesses that are in there, or?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Ames-
It's not going to really be advertising, right?
No, the, the signs would be to advertise the businesses that are offered at the center.
Just indicate the businesses in there.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toma.
Quick question, I'm not sure if it's for you, Chris, or for the applicant, but currently there are three hundred and something thousand square feet of retail mostly in that center. Do you know how much of that is filled currently?
Councilmember Toma, I'm not sure. I know Scott, do you have a sense of that? How much is filled today?
I, I would rely on the applicant to give us what their current vacancy is. They'd have the most up to date.
But you're adding an additional four-hundred thousand? Is that correct? Roughly?
Yes, sir, I believe that's correct.
Okay. And, and the feeling is that these, this additional residential units would sort of drum up business, if you will, for lack of a better term, for the, for the current and for the new spaces, correct?
Correct. Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Should I address my question about the lease?
Oh, go ahead. Identify yourself.
Greg Fitchett with Howard Hughes. And a couple of questions that you had. One was about the, how much of the space is leased today? Today, there's about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet of retail space built on the site today. That's about seventy-five percent occupied today. We do have some leases, as Heidi mentioned. We have a lease for the Sandbar space, so they're going to be started construction very soon. So we have leases to get us up to about eighty percent. And then your other question, yes, that adding residential to the site definitely will add to vitality, it'll help to support the existing businesses that are there. So we think it's a very, you know, positive synergistic addition to have people living on the site as well as the retail that's there.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question real quickly. What is the proposed timeline of, of this?
So if the council supports the action today, my next step is to sort of renew the analysis of the site from a market perspective. Everyone knows, obviously, the market was, you know, very, hit very hard right after the center was built back in two thousand and seven, but it has been recovering. The adjacent apartments, there's two-hundred-and-fifty-four apartments that are on the site today in the adjacent parcel, those are well leased. So my next step really will be to, you know, do, you know, commission a new market study to evaluate the current condition. Things have been improving, so I now need to check and see, you know, are they, have they improved to the state where we're able to go ahead and proceed immediately with the project? If we, if we do find that out, we would then proceed with design and potentially could start construction as early as late next year.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Leone.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Question is, what is the setback from the wall, the people, the residents, the setback on that?
Mayor, Councilor Ames, I'm sorry, Councilor Leone, excuse me. There are a few setbacks that were established a few years ago when we did the amendment to the PAD, so what it provides for is a few things. Two-hundred-and-seventy feet is the, the closest that an access point can be to Park West. It also required a hundred-foot landscape buffer, and, or rather, a hundred-foot separation between parking and the back wall, and then an eighty-foot landscape buffer. In terms of the actual building setback from the wall to the building, you're talking about at least three-hundred-and-thirty feet, which comprises the power line corridor, plus whatever additional distance is from that point, probably an additional thirty feet or so.
Now, you have a, you have a walkway there with lights. Are they going to finish that, complete that?
Correct. Councilor Leone, with the development of Parcel Three, they would have to continue that program, so they would have to continue the landscaping, the lighting within that parcel. That's right.
But they're going to finish it?
Correct.
Are they going to put landscaping there, trees, bushes, or anything?
The stipulation already requires a, an eighty-foot landscape buffer, so when that parcel develops, they would have to implement that buffer on that parcel.
Now, who's going to put that up? The developer?
Correct. Developer would do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
No other questions or comments? Could I have a motion? Oh, second, the second already? I'm losing track what's going on here. All right. This, this is Park West Plan Area Development Amendment, Ninety-Ninth Avenue and Northern Avenue, thirty-two R. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. The unanimous six-zero. Next up is the Minor General Plan Amendment. Oh, Second Amendment amended and restated Park West Development Agreement. We had one request to speak. Mike Phelan.
I was going to defer to Mr. White and then maybe speak after his presentation, if that's all right with you.
I don't know that we need a presentation. Haven't we been over everything?
The item that you just acted on was the PAD amendment. The item next is an amendment to the Development Agreement, which is a separate item, but related.
Go ahead.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be before you to talk about economic development. So the matter before you now is a discussion on the Second amended, Second Amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement, as it pertains to the Park West property that you just heard concerning the entitlement side of the economic development equation. So what do I mean by that? When we look at the Park West asset, you know, we, we reflect back on the Economic Development Implementation Strategy, or EDIS. The EDIS contained as one of the key initiatives, looking at the one-on-one corridor as a key investment zone, assets that exist today that can be accentuated and, and grown for the attraction of targeted industries. And so when we looked at the one-on-one corridor, you know, certainly Park West fits that mold. It, it's a center that needs, it's a lifestyle center, quite frankly, that needs to be finished. Had a great start, but it had some vacant pads. It has some now Parcel Three vacant land, and so when we looked at that as an asset, there was two component pieces as to how can we make that economic asset even better? And that would be, first, through the entitlements, the, the Plan Area Development Amendment that you just heard Chris Hawkes speak to, as to a, a modification to the land plan to add the densities, to add the mix of uses that can make it a more vital center for purposes of, of retail residential. But also, from a Development Agreement perspective, creating the conditions whereby Parcel Three, which is plus or minus eighteen acres, could be a great site for the attraction of targeted industries under the EDIS. And so when we looked at the Development Agreement, it has a long history, and there are some legacy issues that needed to be addressed. So legacy issues referring to conditions from prior agreements that are no longer needed and can serve as an impediment to development. So as part of the presentation today, I wanted to touch on a number of things as it pertains to amending the Development Agreement for the purpose of furthering economic development at the Park West asset along the Loop One-on-One Investment Zone area. So when we were negotiating with Howard Hughes Corporation that, that we just heard Greg Fitchett from, we sought a collaboration. A collaboration and partnership is key to everything we do in economic development for all the projects that we already are working on and ones that are forthcoming. But what's the sole purpose of attracting targeted industries to, to the site? When you, so like, for example, manufacturing, for example, healthcare, biosciences, higher education, corporate campuses, corporate headquarters, advanced business services, all of those things that are rooted in the EDIS. When those types of uses look at sites, they often like to be along freeways, and they often like to be sited next to existing retail assets. So we think that that's a great opportunity for that vacant Parcel Three to be a targeted industry-focused execution. So in working with the Howard Hughes Corporation, with the vast and deep penetration they have into the market, as well as marketing, sales and marketing efforts on part of the city of Peoria, you know, we're looking to collaborate with them to attract targeted industries to, to the Parcel Three. Part of the presentation today also will talk to making Parcel Three the vacant piece adjacent to the one-on-one as shovel-ready as possible, in terms of the type of improvements that are going to be needed to, to create the utility and the pathway, roadway pathways to Parcel Three to make it developable, and the cost-sharing concept that is contained in the amended DA that we'll talk about in a second. Also, we wanted to clarify and stipulate the type of industry user that we're talking about to attract to the site, and then what would be the quality of investment that we would be looking for, for that target industry to bring to the city of Peoria. And then, as for some of the legacy issues that I, I mentioned earlier, again, being some of those conditions rooted in prior agreements that, that no longer are relevant, of discharging those obligations so that we can create a, a, a level playing field and a clear path forward to accomplish this objective. So these are all the things we'll touch on as part of this presentation. Okay, so what's changing to the agreement? As I mentioned, the EDIS stipulates certain targeted industries, and this is a site that I think is a good site for attracting them. So as I mentioned, manufacturing, corporate headquarters, advanced business services, research and development, biosciences, alternative energy, telecommunications, healthcare, and higher education. What it excludes from an EDIS perspective is retail, hotel, residential uses. Okay? So we're not saying that they can't build that. All we're saying is that that's not what we're looking to invest in, because that's not a targeted industry from an EDIS perspective. So these are the types of users that we believe could be a really nice fit for Parcel Three off the one-on-one, especially given some of the enhanced signage opportunities that exist relative to the PAD Amendment action that was just considered. Now, when we look at any prospect that's a targeted industry coming to the city of Peoria, they have to demonstrate a quality of investment. And how we usually measure that is in jobs that are created for those types of projects that create jobs, because not every project that we do creates jobs. There are other metrics that they might measure against. But for those projects that do create jobs, we, one of the metrics is relative to the job creation element. The other is in terms of capital investment. How much money are they investing in, in terms of their operations for, for their entry into this, this submarket? So under the quality of investment test, what we would be looking for, for the type of targeted end user that I just referenced, would be at least a ten million dollar capital investment by the user. Now, that includes all of the horizontal and vertical developments. Okay? So everything from infrastructure to, to, to framing and finishing out of buildings, we're looking for a total capital investment of at least ten million as, as a benchmark. We're also looking for users that are expected to create at least a hundred jobs within three years, and those jobs would include professional and management positions. So we want some higher, higher paying positions that would enable an average salary of at least fifty thousand as, as a baseline. So these are, these are milestones or benchmarks that we want to measure against as we seek to attract and negotiate with targeted industries for an execution here on Parcel Three of Park West. Now, the city will, under the Development Agreement Amendment before you tonight, will have the final authority on whether the quality of investment test is satisfied or not, and that's normal and customary for our business attraction efforts here at the city. But what we believe that this type of quality investment does is it also adds energy and vitality to Park West itself that exists today. Office workers spend money at lunch hours, you know, for, for various services, lunch and, and shopping. So one has a positive effect on the other. In the same way, the existing retail development on Parcel One is an amenity that many of these types of industries like to have in close proximity for their workers, so that both feed synergistically each other. In terms of the clarifications added to the Development Agreement, one of the things that we need to think about in the Development Agreement before you contemplate is the creation of an access road from Ninety-Ninth Avenue to the property line of Parcel Three. So let me just show you a diagram real fast of what I mean. You will see in the dark line labeled Access Road that we need to have a way to access Parcel Three in order for that targeted industry development to occur. This speaks to shovel readiness. And for those of you that have acted on the Vistancia effort, we, we had that similar situation where we need to ensure that the infrastructure is there to enable development to occur. And, and so what the Development Agreement contemplates is that the developer and the city would participate on a fifty-fifty cost-sharing basis for the creation only of engineering and design plans, not the construction of the road, only engineering and design plans not to exceed one-hundred thousand dollars on the part of the city for the creation of that access road. That would also include all of the utilities that need to be extended to, to the western property boundary of Parcel Three, so that when those targeted industries come to us and we, in our sales and marketing mode, we can say we have a shovel-ready site that's ready to go. That adds to a more competitive- That adds to a more competitive position for us in trying to attract these type of industries.
We have a question, Mr. Ains.
Yeah, you would rather this access from 99th opposed to an frontage off of the 101?
The frontage road kind of being a legacy item from prior agreements, and Chris Hockes alluded to it in his presentation, it was actually evaluated under a recent traffic impact analysis. And given the land uses and the PAD amendment that Chris spoke to, which includes some of the planned uses here on parcel three, it was determined that it was not necessary and therefore not warranted as needed for the development of the center. That is, you know, easily a multimillion-dollar road that could be viewed as an impediment to development for parcel three, especially if it's not needed. So under the development agreement, one of the legacy items that would be looked to be discharged, assuming that the baseline amount of development that actually occurs does not exceed what the updated traffic impact analysis stipulates, with that caveat, the frontage road would not be required.
Okay, but then you're proposing we would need access and talking about an access road off of 99th.
Correct. And the reason for-
You have to go all the way around to get there.
Correct. In talking with the applicant, the applicant desired for that access to parcel three not to occur through the center of the existing center, as that would adversely impact circulation within it. So when you looked at what's available and possible, and we've met with SRP, as has the planning department jointly, that access road north of the Harkins, really on the backside there as part of the SRP power line corridor, seems to be an appropriate access pathway as that is currently spaced, that doesn't have a higher and better use anyway, given the SRP power line corridor. So we believe that that is, would be the way to access parcel three with appropriate entry monumentation at 99th to bring the workers into parcel three.
Thank you.
So what the 99th Avenue access road improvement would include, certainly the roadway improvements, curb gutter, entry monumentation, landscaping, storm drain, water sewer, cable fiber, all the whole scope of work there to make that a shovel-ready parcel three site. The city's obligation under the DA that's before you would be to contribute on a 50-50 basis, but not to exceed $100,000 for just the development of the engineering and design work, to be permit-ready for that road construction. The road construction itself, as well as all development on parcel three, would be the obligation of the developer. We've touched on this point, the fact that the frontage road is no longer required. One of the other clarifications that is in the development agreement as a legacy item, since the frontage road is no longer necessary, the formation of the frontage road improvement district would no longer be necessary, as well as the development agreement previously had repayment obligations on the part of the city to the developer that are being terminated and discharged because certain of the economic development goals from prior agreements had not been reached. So there are three legacy items that are being discharged through this agreement, one being the frontage road obligations for the reasons stated, two would be the creation of a frontage road improvement district to help pay for the creation of a frontage road since that's no longer needed. And then the third legacy item would be that the city is no longer obligated for that reimbursement to the developer because certain of those other prior obligations had not been met. So those are discharged legacy items that create a positive path forward, we believe, to create this targeted industry economic development opportunity on parcel three. So next steps would be your consideration for the DA amendment approval, and then the appropriation of the city's 50-50 cost share max not to exceed $100,000. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Ains.
That $100,000, since we're not looking at the frontage road, would that money come from savings from that, or?
No, that money would come from the... It would be an Economic Development Opportunity Fund contingency. So that would be the funding source for the $100,000.
General economic development priorities.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I have a request to speak.
Thank you again. This is a totally new development. I have not heard anything about this. And if they think they're going to put a road behind our complex, they got a lot of problems. We will fight this. We do not need traffic and all the fumes and all the other stuff within 100 feet of where we live. And this is totally new, and they can find another way to get to that parcel three. They deal off ramp, but if they think they're coming around Northern Avenue and coming up 99th and adding to the traffic and having traffic going back and forth on that narrow pathway, which they will then have to expand to at least two lanes, they got another thing coming. We will fight that, and we will not be, and we're not going to be happy about it, and we will cause problems.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Mike Phelan, Fenimore Craig, 2394, East Camelback Road, Suite 600, Phoenix 85016. I'm here tonight representing Park West and wanted to address some of the questions that have come up, but also some of the presentations Scott's presented. And thank you for your patience. I knew Scott had a more comprehensive presentation, so I appreciate your patience with me. We are here in support of the second amended and restated development agreement. As Scott pointed out, there are a lot of cleanup items and updates necessary to make the development agreement match the current situation that the development is under right now. So we appreciate that. We are supportive of all the changes. We think they are necessary for the project, not only the cleanup items, but also to address the economic development goals of the city and the Economic Development Office. We do thank Scott and his staff for helping us through this process. Regarding the latter question, if we can get that graphic back up on the screen, this is not a public road. This is an existing, if we can see it here, the road, if you will, actually is in place right now. So it's not a new road, it's not a public road. It's dealing with any kind of improvements or upgrades that may be necessary to just access parcel three. That would include not only access issues, if there are any upgrades that are necessary, we haven't done the engineering, that would be part of the requirements under the development agreement, but it would also address infrastructure issues, designing and engineering the water and sewer needs of the parcel three. So we didn't mean to alarm our neighbor, but the road already exists. We're not doing anything except maybe addressing future needs of parcel three that might be required to deal with parcel three, but it's not a brand-new road and it's not a public road. And I hope that addresses this question.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Otherwise, we ask for your approval of the development agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Just wanted to clarify. So what we're talking about here is essentially an area that's already paved, and it's already sort of there. And what we're looking at doing is ensuring that we have the infrastructure underneath to serve parcel three. Is that correct?
Well, it will be, maybe a little of both, again, until we do the engineering. But, you know, there is a road there. Do we need to make improvements or upgrades to the road to deal with parcel three's needs? We don't know. But we're not establishing a new road. It's already improved. It serves the development already and the parking that's in place already. I think Mr. Hockes referenced the fact that there was already a 270-foot setback to the turn-in from 99th Avenue, and that's the road he's referring to that's in place right now.
Okay, so, again, just so I understand correctly, this would be similar to the road, if we call it that, that is sort of the main entrance now to Park West?
Yes, that's my understanding.
It wouldn't be as extensive as the road off of northern into the property. That's a four-lane road with parking on either side. That access road that is there today across parcel one, it doesn't go across parcel two today, but it goes the whole length along parcel one, is an access road for the parking today. There may be some minor improvements that are needed to serve parcel three, but we don't expect any major changes to that roadway, which is an existing roadway today.
Thank you.
Mr. Ains.
Yeah, still speaking about the access road, I notice it has to go through parcel two, which is owned by another company. Maybe they wouldn't care for that.
Yeah, my understanding is that you've already secured an easement for that road. Could you elaborate on that?
That's correct. We have both a letter of support from the adjacent property owner, the formerly Alta, now the View Apartments, and we also have easements already documented and signed allowing us to construct that road.
We already have that, and it would come up to parcel three, and parcel three, you would need your own roadway system through there anyway, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And that access road, I guess we're saying, and it's below all the parking, and it's right behind the Harkins there, and it is used right now certainly to do the parking, right? And I don't know, I suppose it would cause, there'd be more traffic there. But I guess that impact would be looked at, and this would be addressed with the citizens that live beyond the parking area and beyond the area that has the trees and so on.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll defer to Andy, but the traffic impact analysis that was done contemplated all of the land use intensities that are associated with the PAD. That is inclusive of what was planned for the parcel three. So if Andy maybe could come down and speak to the traffic impact analysis, because that was the chief document that was used to ascertain whether or not the frontage road is truly warranted and would that traffic impact erode existing condition.
Yeah, frontage road would be very expensive, right?
Yeah, just to echo what Scott said, mayor, members of the council, there aren't any new roadway improvements that are needed as part of this development or the proposed development. The frontage road is no longer required.
Yes, I understand that, but this access road, initially, if you improve it, this would be a little bit better road to go into the parking and so forth. But then if something is developed in parcel three, then you would have more traffic coming around to make its way to parcel three.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
Other questions? Question? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. That access road, is that the one, that's a new road, right? It's a private road, that where the black line is? Is it going to go from 99th all the way over to unit two? Is that what that is?
The access road is taking an existing improved condition and expanding it so that parcel three can be accessed for the economic development purpose. So right now, you have an improved area, so it would be adding additional roadway improvements and infrastructure improvements along that demarcation, tying 99th to parcel three, so that parcel three could be developed for its stated economic development purpose.
Now, how wide is that road? Is that for one, two lanes, three lanes?
The next step, should council approve the development agreement, would the developer pursuant to the development agreement would have six months from the effective date of the agreement to submit an engineering and design package? That's to be determined through the engineering and design package. So we need to receive that. The city engineer will review it under normal and customary situation to understand what is the utility, infrastructure needs, as well as the ultimate road. I believe, and I'll defer to Greg on this, but I believe the conversation has been, you know, one lane in each direction type of a roadway. But I think the ultimate answer is going to be a function of the engineering and design package that has not yet been created.
So that's going to be in and out, right?
Yeah. Greg, am I correct on that?
Yes, that is what we anticipate. Right now, it is essentially a drive aisle to access the parking in that area, one lane in each direction. We do not anticipating it becoming any more than that. We anticipate it would stay one lane in each direction.
But it's in and out?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Questions or comments? Okay, this is, which one is 33R, Second Amendment amended and restated Park West Development Agreement? Could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Patana, seconded by Mr. Leone. Please vote. The clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is call of the public on non-agenda items. I don't have any more requests to speak. Reports from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Just one brief report this evening, and that is on the Keep It Safe: A Family Affair, and John Sefton will make the brief presentation.
Good evening again, mayor and council. And yes, it is still event season. Anything under 100 degrees, of course, we're going to be out there having some fun. And this Saturday, October 11th, is Keep It Safe: A Family Affair. It will be held from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the St. Joseph Medical Plaza at 7727 West Deer Valley Road. That's between 75th and 83rd on Deer Valley, just on the south side of the road. It's at the St. Joseph's Peoria Medical Center in North Peoria. The event will feature free blood pressure checks, fire and water safety prevention classes, fire truck and smokehouse tours, and I assume the smokehouse tours are not the barbecue kind, but the fire prevention kind. And of course, the chief will be there to help us with that. Self-devence demonstrations, bike rodeo, the police department comes out and helps us with a bike rodeo, they do a great job. Face painting, inflatable attractions, various vendors and booths, helmet and booster seat giveaways, and an important part for keeping our community safe. And the police department will be helping us to distribute helmets and booster seats and getting them fitted just right into the vehicles. And that's, of course, while supplies last. So again, that's this Saturday, October 11th, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the St. Joseph's Medical Plaza, 7727 West Deer Valley Road. Thank you.
That's all I have, mayor and council.
Time for reports from the city council. Start with Michael.
Basically, all I have to report from the youth is basically, I toured Luke Air Force Base with my Air Force ROTC unit. We got to see the new F-35 and look at the hush house, which is where they test all the engines and stuff. Pretty cool. Another thing we did, I did, I want to talk about is I had lunch with Councilman Edwards at my high school. He came to speak to some of the students and listened to some of their concerns and ideas about the community. It was pretty good, I guess. I'd also like to thank members of the council for approving my position. I'm very proud and honored to represent the youth of Peoria, and I hope to do my best at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leone.
Thank you, mayor. He's lucky. I never got the city F-35s. Yeah, I never got to see him, so he's lucky anyway. But he did a good job today, you know? We had to coax him a little bit. I'm sure his mom and dad coaxed him a little bit. On Friday, September 19th, I attended the Benavilla luncheon, and Bill Patana was there in surprise, and they had a very good speaker who went talking about her husband, what bad shape he was in, and how much that she had to take care of him. So the Benavilla is a great organization, and if you don't know too much about it, I would contact them in surprise. They even got one here now in the library. got one here now in the library, in Peoria Library, where you can talk to them, and I think it's important. If there's something that you need for kids or families, I think you should talk to them and see what they could do for you. On the 27th, at the Fiesta, it was a great Fiesta. I went on Friday night, and I watched the race, the 5K run, but Saturday, it was rained out, and it was too bad, because I think it would have been great, and I hope they come back with it and continue it. It's important. Also, on Saturday, 27th, I attended a river cunning for Freaky Brewery Company. It's a beer company, and it's great. It's in my district, and I don't know how it tastes. I didn't drink it, but Bob was there, can probably tell you. I don't drink beer, but I was a little concerned with my Boston accent if I was going to pronounce Freaky right, you know. But it's Freaky Brewery Company, and it's in all of industry, so if you want to go down there and try it out, you might like it. I don't know. I don't drink beer, so I can't say too much about it. On October 1st, which was my wife's birthday, I attended a citizens' recognition at the Fire Station One. At the Army Guard members, Sam Pedina and Alina Stewart, received certificates for lifesaving families from the fire. And it's always good to recognize these people when they do something like that. So, you know, it's just something that Peoria does, and I want to thank them for doing it. It's just great. On Friday, October 3rd, I attended the P-83 Foundation demolition. John Edges was there and Bill Patana was there, and we all broke a piece of the rock. And I took a piece of the rock home, by the way, and it was a 16-pound sledgehammer. And to this day, my hand is still sore, but I thought that Susan Dee was going to break her kneecaps the way she was swinging that thing around. But fortunately, she didn't. And Andy was up there, and he had to show off. He had to go way on the top, you know. And if you've never been in prison, when you go there, now you know how the rock quarry is. That's what they do. They break rocks all day long. Let me see. I just want to mention a little bit about the gains is next week, on the 18th, at Rio Vista Park, and then just a little bit of, I think John Sullivan already had mentioned it, but November 2nd, Vista Park Community Park is a four-miler. City of Peoria Veterans Day, five-miler, November 15th. City of Peoria Super Day, 10K, Rio Vista, and Marathon on West Gate. And Rio Vista Community Park, a four-miler and a half marathon. Peoria Cactus Dash, 5K, and We Love Art, 5K, April 11th, downtown Peoria. And City of Peoria Father's Day, four-miler, Rio Vista. Thank you, and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Edwards? Thank you, Mayor. Last Friday, I also attended the P-83. I don't want to call it groundbreaking, but we did tear down one of the monuments in anticipation of Phase One of redevelopment, where we're putting in new wayfinding signs and new color lighting. So I thank Councilman Leoni, Councilman Patana for attending that. It's just the first phase of future phases. We had probably about 15 of the local businesses there also swinging sledgehammer, not as eloquently as Mr. Leoni, but they took a whack at it. And so it's just great to see that we're moving forward on those phases. Last Wednesday, as Michael had mentioned, I have started a series of lunch discussions at the local high schools, and so I'll be reaching out to the local high schools and just offering lunch with the youth advisory that are sitting on the Youth Advisory Board here in Peoria, inviting, having them invite five friends, and lunch is on me. And we're just sitting down and talking, whatever's important to them, whether it's traffic, whether it's school issues, whatever. I just want to get them more specifically engaged. And so we had, first turnout was not as great, but we had about seven students and had some great discussions. And as we roll them into other high schools, I will be sending out invitations to my fellow council members when there's a meeting at their school and welcome them to attend and join in the conversation, because it's some very stimulating conversation with a different perspective from youth. And then lastly, this afternoon, I attended the Future Leaders Town Hall meeting hosted here at Rio Vista, and the topic was Arizona's economy. And we had about 68 students from Peoria High Schools attend this meeting. I had anticipated maybe 15 to 20. It's 68 students, and they got into roundtable discussions. Unfortunately, I had to leave because of the council meeting. I know, Ian, you're going to be talking probably a little bit more about it, so I won't steal your thunder, but it was just a great opportunity to see the youth in this city engaged. We had a lot of civic leaders there that were talking about it, and I want to thank staff for making it happen. And considering the amount of time that it took to get this one off the ground and the short amount of time that we put it together, I anticipate if we had 68 students this year, I want to double that number next year. And I think just getting these kids more engaged and giving them an opportunity to voice their opinions is what it's all about. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ian?
As Councilmember Edwards mentioned, I did have the opportunity to attend the Future Leaders Town Hall earlier today, and more than 60 members across Peoria attend. These were members as far as involved in the National Honor Society, student councils, people who really, really care about the future of Peoria and, of course, the future of Arizona. And basically, what it was is that we all gathered together. We kind of had a brief explanation as far as the main components that are important to Arizona's economy. And then later on, we broke up into three groups, and each one of those groups addressed specific problems that Arizona faces. What works for Arizona, what doesn't work, what is working in our local communities, what needs to be improved upon. And overall, it was an amazing discussion, hearing the different opinions, hearing the different thoughts that all these students have about how the direction, as we as a city should move forward, and how as a state we should move forward. I know, unfortunately, many young people, they say in high school, I think senior year when they graduate, they say, "The moment I graduate, I want to leave Arizona." And so a big portion of that was trying to think of ways in which, how can we get them to stay here, and how we can get Arizona's economy to be attractive enough for the youth of our country, especially the youth here in the City of Peoria that have so much talent that they can use here in Arizona. How can we get them to stay? And overall, how can we get them to really see Arizona as a place that they can really grow and prosper as adults? So I thank the city that had put in so much time and effort to put this work together. I know the youth of Peoria really, really appreciate when they have members of the community, especially city leaders, come and engage them and listen to them and really take their ideas seriously. So I'd like to thank everyone here, of course, all the council members, city staff that showed up. And of course, that was the reason, as far as my tardiness was concerned, I was there cleaning up, putting everything away. But overall, it was an amazing event, and I look forward to doing more events like these, hearing what the youth has to offer as far as what their opinions are, what they think should go, because they have a lot, a lot to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patana.
Thank you, Mayor. This past Sunday, I had my annual Park Fest out at Westbrook Village. And if you know anything about a typical Park Fest, it's bouncy houses and face painting and guys, you know, doing balloon animals. But since the average age in Westbrook Village is well over 60 years old, we had none of that. What we did have, though, was we had a live band. We had, it was catered by Benavilla, who did a remarkable job with the catering. And there was about 300 people in attendance, and our community services department, along with the people at Westbrook Village, also had an art show that was part of it. Councilman Edward showed up with his wife. Chief Mincher was there. I appreciated that very much. Brianna Decker showed up, and all of the members from the Westbrook Village Homeowners Association were there as well. It was a wonderful time. Like I said, over 300 people attended. I could not have been happier with the turnout. I heard very many positive remarks about it, and they would love to do that again. A shout-out to John Sefton and to his staff. They were there well before the event started, and they stayed till the very end, and they made sure that everything went perfectly. I could not be any happier with the event, and I can't wait for the next one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ames.
Yeah, I attended, there's a new kind of cathedral in town, the LDS on Pinnacle and 51st. They had an open house, and some of us got invited, and Bill Patana and Ben and I, and it was an interesting experience, and we learned some things. And I think they can be a good partner. The LDS people, Latter-day Saints, they often do neighborhood cleanup here in Peoria, and they bring out like 100 people, and they clean up a whole neighborhood in the morning. But they made an offer that they might like to work with some of our not-for-profits and provide service boots on the ground for them. So I think that was a good outcome of our being there. And I have a question for Ian. You said, you made it sound like everyone wants to leave Arizona. Is that true?
Unfortunately, yeah. Unfortunately, a lot of students do feel, once they, they say, once they graduate high school, they're going to go to a different state. And so part of the conversation that we had is how we can change that, especially towards the end. One of the people said, you know, "There's nothing for me here in Arizona." And so at the end of a conversation, we were talking about Arizona's economy, we really had discussion as far as how to make it much more attractive for students to want to stay here, to feel that they can grow as far as not only economically, but, you know, have a family and whatnot, and see that they have a future here.
Well, assembly for colleges elsewhere, right?
I'm going to interrupt this dialogue.
Okay.
You're supposed to report on your activities.
No more.
I'm getting the stink eye there from lawyers.
Okay.
Is that true?
No.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have anything to add to what's been said. We adjourn, and we come back in force for the Vistanzia West Community Facilities District Board meeting. Would you please note the role? This is the final call to submit speaker request forms. I'm sure they're going to come flying in. The agenda, 39R organizational matters relating to the formation of the Vistanzia West Community Facilities District.
Brett Manning will make the presentation.
Welcome to your very first meeting as the Vistanzia West Community Facilities District Board. You have one item before you this evening. It's a resolution taking action regard to the organization of this new district. The resolution authorizes the following items. It appoints the board's chairperson and vice-chairperson, as well as the district manager, district counsel, district clerk, and district treasurer. It approves the general plan of the district. It approves the execution of the district development financing participation in intergovernmental agreement that you previously heard in your role as a city council. It does call for an election to authorize up to $9 million in future bonds for the financing of certain infrastructure projects, and it authorizes the preparation of a feasibility report regarding future bond sales. A future public hearing would be held by this board once that feasibility report is prepared. In the way of a brief background information, at your meeting on August 27th, the city council formed the new Vistanzia West Community Facilities District. The boundaries of the new CFD encompass the new Trilogy West Development Project of approximately 360 acres and 1,000 homes. That was done in response to a zoning stipulation, the intent of which was to create some property tax equity between the homes in an existing Trilogy Development and the new Trilogy West Development Project. At the August 27th city council meeting, staff's presentation went into a great amount of detail as to the terms of the new CFD development agreement, the risk factors associated with creating a new CFD, and how those risks would be addressed in security documents associated with future bond sales, homeowner disclosure documents, the projected impact of a $2.10 target tax rate, and the administrative requirements associated with the new Community Facilities District. In terms of one of the items before you in the resolution, the district development financing participation in intergovernmental agreement that's before you for consideration of approval, you'll recall that that agreement was pretty lengthy, covered a number of topics, including stating that the district will acquire certain infrastructure projects. It provides a mechanism to acquire that through the sale of a certain amount of general obligation bonds of the district. It defines the terms and conditions of those bond sales. It provides for the standby contribution agreement and letters of credit to help address the risks that we previously discussed. It provides for insurance and indemnification against certain claims. It provides for the payment of certain expenses such as the annual audit and insurance premiums, and it requires disclosure of the new Community Facilities District to the initial homebuyers. There will be a series of future actions brought before this board. Those will include, after the bond election is held, the board would canvass the election. A feasibility report would be prepared, and the board would hold that public hearing. You would consider providing authorization for the initial direct placement of approximately $15,000 of general obligation bonds to get the $2.10 tax rate in place. And subsequently, the second series of bonds would be authorized that would provide approximately $6 million to acquire certain infrastructure. The staff recommendation before you this evening is for adoption of the resolution, taking those actions related to organization of the district, approval of the general plan, approval of district development financing participation in intergovernmental agreement, authorizing preparation of a feasibility report, and authorizing a bond election that will be held on December 2nd, 2014. That date did change, and you have new documents. The documents before you this evening are consistent with that new date. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions of you, if the board has any.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Seeing then, could I have a motion? Moved and seconded. Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Organizational matters relating to the formation of the Vistanzia West Community Facilities District. Please vote. Clerk will record your vote. It is unanimous. There are no public requests to speak. We adjourn.